You ready, Mr. Knight?
I am, sir.
Okay. All right. I like that little switch room. Good evening and welcome to the City of Roswell Mayor and City Council Meeting of Monday, November 10, 2025. I'm Mayor Kurt Wilson. I'd like to introduce my colleagues and council members present. Councilmember Sarah Beeson. Councilmember Christine Hall is on as an excused absence this evening. Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Lee Hills. Councilmember Dave Johnson. Councilmember William Mortland. And Councilmember Alan Sells also has an excused absence this evening. At this time, I'll now turn the meeting over to our Chief Administrator's Officer and City Administrator, Mr. Randy Knight, to explain how the meeting's running. Mr. Knight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wilson, and good evening, everyone. In accordance with Section, Chapter 3.70, the city code, the city council shall hold regular public meetings. The purpose of these city council meetings are for the public to participate and speak on agenda items which constitute formal decisions by the elected body. These items can be accessed via the city website prior to the meeting. This is a public meeting, and some items do require a formal public hearing. An important component of city council meetings is to hear directly from residents on items listed on the agenda. Residents are at the top of the organizational chart for the city, and therefore, public comments and questions are essential for mayor and council to consider as they contemplate each decision. I would like to reemphasize with everyone, we do have public comment cards, which can be found at the rear of the meeting room. Also, we have a number of staff members here on my right side, staff members, if you could, absent the city fire department, who's here for another reason, but staff members on this side. If you would like to ensure that you access a comment card, if you would like to speak on an agenda item, we want to make sure that you receive those and fill those out, and we'll provide them to the city clerk. One additional item this evening is we do have a section on the agenda under the mayor's report for any Roswell business to speak. We have allotted an entire period of about 10 minutes in its entirety. If you have a Roswell business and you would like to speak tonight, we ask that you also fill out one of those cards so that you can be readily identified, and we'll make sure that opportunity is afforded to you. Speakers also will be called in the order that the comment cards are received. We ask that everyone, of course, observe the principles of mutual respect and display the appropriate demeanor during the course of the meeting this evening. Excuse me, with respect to the proceedings, we ask that attention is given to the person speaking, and if you need to have an independent conversation, we ask that you exit the rear doors to the vestibule area. In addition, we ask that you silence any electronic devices at this time. The mayor is the presiding officer and will ensure an orderly exchange of comments, questions, and discussion leading to any decisions by the elected body and during the course of the meeting. And we encourage everyone in attendance in the viewing audience to visit the city website for information on news, events, and meetings. And we also encourage you to participate in the various activities and offerings here in the city of Roswell, which can be found on roswell365.com. There are a number of events upcoming in the city of Roswell which promote community, physical activity, and leisure, as we all make Roswell the number-one family community in America. Mayor Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Knight. And as always, at this time, I would like to call Dory Griggs, our Roswell Fire Department Chaplain, to the front for the invocation and moment silence. Welcome, Dory.
Please join me. Holi' one, we give thanks for this opportunity to gather here tonight as a community. We are grateful for our city leaders, staff, and our community. Be with us this evening as topics are discussed and decisions are made. Roswell is a special place in so many ways. Help our leaders to continue the tradition of excellence that makes Roswell a great place to call home. Tonight, we give special thanks for U.S. Marine Sergeant Garrett Maxedon. We honor his service to our country and also his service to the city of Roswell through the Roswell Fire Department. Watch over all our veterans and active-duty military members and the families who support them. We're thankful and celebrate the Roswell Fire Division Chief, Chris Cavender, who is the Chief Officer of the Year. Please watch over all our first responders, 911 dispatch, the police and fire department, and emergency medical staff as they work to keep our city safe. Watch over the proceedings tonight and bless our community. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dory, as always. You always do such a splendid job. Thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to ask United States Marine Sergeant Garrett Maxedon to please come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome, Garrett.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Sergeant Maxedon. I'm going to ask you to stay right up there for me, please, sir, for the first item under the mayor's report, which is a reading of the Proclamation of Esteemed Veteran Roswell Award. Council, if you'll please join me as well.
Whereas the city of Roswell is proud to recognize and honor those who have served our nation with distinction and continue to serve our community with dedication and courage. Whereas Sergeant Garrett Maxedon began his military service in 2006 at the age of 19, answering the call to serve his country as a member of the United States Marine Corps. Whereas Sergeant Maxedon completed his basic training at the Marine Corps Recruit Depot in Paris Island, South Carolina, and went on to serve as a platoon communications non-commission officer with the First Reconnaissance Battalion, Bravo Company, Second Platoon. And whereas during his service, Sergeant Maxedon received extensive and highly specialized training, including long-range VHF, HF, and satcom radio communications, long-range reconnaissance and surveillance, advanced close-quarters battle, Marine Corps Combat Survival Swim qualification, advanced land navigation, and reconnaissance amphibious operations. And whereas his unit was tasked with training Iraqi special forces, contributing directly to the advancement of global security and the mission of freedom abroad. And whereas Sergeant Maxedon's exemplary service earned him multiple commendations, including the Marine Corps Good Conduct Medal, the Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, the Sea Service Deployment Ribbon, the Iraq Campaign Medal, and the National Defense Service Medal. And whereas after four years of honorable active-duty service, Sergeant Maxedon was honorably discharged in 2002 at the rank of Sergeant E5. Whereas following his military service, Sergeant Maxedon continued his commitment to excellence by studying business administration at the University of Georgia and completing his fire NPQs at Leneer Technical College, leading him to begin his fire service career with Cobb Counting Fire and Emergency Services. And whereas Sergeant Maxedon now proudly serves the city of Roswell Fire Department as a fire lieutenant at Station 21 Seashift, demonstrating the same integrity, leadership, and devotion to duty that defined his military career. And whereas beyond his professional commitments, Sergeant Maxedon continues to give back through his volunteer work as part of his church's security team, embodying the spirit of service in every aspect of his life. Now, therefore, I, Curtin Wilson, Mayor of the city of Roswell, Georgia, deere by name Sergeant Garrett Maxedon, an esteemed veteran of Roswell, and call upon all our citizens to recognize his outstanding service to our country as well as to our community, and that there is no higher calling than those who serve the United States Armed Forces. Congratulations, Garrett.
I really, really appreciate all of you to be here tonight. Tonight's a special night, and today's a special day. Today is the Marine Corps' 250th birthday, so it's pretty special for me to be able to be up here to accept this award on behalf of my brothers and sisters of the Marine Corps and just being a part of the city, for the city of Roswell and the Roswell Fire Department. So, thank you all very much for being here tonight. It means a lot to me. Thank you.
Good. 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 Good.
Yeah, thank you, Garrett. Well, next on the mayor's report is the esteemed Roswell Public Safety Employee Award, the Fire Department Division Chief, Chris Cavender. Chris, come on up here, and let's, let's read this proclamation for you as well, sir. Proclamation, Officer of the Mayor, Roswell Fire Chief Officer, Chris Cavender. Whereas Division Chief Chris Cavender has been selected by his peers as the 2024 Fire Chief Officer of the Year in recognition of his leadership, unwavering professionalism, and commitment to excellence. And whereas Division Chief Chris Cavender leads by example, consistently demonstrating integrity, accountability, and respect while inspiring those around him through his action, mentorship, and supporting all members of the Roswell Fire Department as the professional standards division chief. And whereas Division Chief Chris Cavender exemplifies the core values of the city of Roswell Fire Department: service, we serve others before ourselves; teamwork, we are one team at the Roswell Fire Department; accountability, we are accountable for our actions and those of our team; integrity, we earn trust through our actions; respect, we embrace our differences and are considered of others. And whereas through distinguished service, Division Chief Chris Cavender has earned the respect of both peers and leadership, consistently advancing the mission of the department while cultivating a culture of trust, excellence, and support. And whereas Division Chief Chris Cavender demonstrates exceptional leadership by promoting department health and safety through proactive planning, data-informed decision-making, and a commitment to maintaining the higher standards of safety, performance, and preparedness. And whereas Division Chief Chris Cavender leads by example, fostering a culture of integrity, accountability, and respect that strengthens team cohesion and ensures mission success. Now, therefore, I, Curtin Wilson, Mayor of the City of Roswell, Georgia, do hereby recognize and honor Division Chief Chris Cavender for his outstanding service and call upon all of our employees and citizens to recognize his outstanding service and unwavering commitment to the city of Roswell, Georgia. Congratulations, Chris.
I'm deeply honored. This award reflects the hard work of everyone in our department. I'm pretty lucky to have such a strong team and the support of my family, especially my wife and my mom. Uh, they're the foundation, and they've been my foundation through it all. Thank you.
I know Pabell wants to say a few words. They told me, they told me.
I knew you were going to do that. I knew you were going to do that. Uh, Chris is just an exceptional person, uh, an exceptional human being. Everyone needs a Chris Cavender in their space. Not only does he energize the space, and he's just a great human being, if you want to see what innovation looks like, it's standing before you. There's nothing that comes before Chris that is not being met with some level of innovation. It's not enough. Anything we give him, he's always looking for a way that that can be enhanced, it can be made bigger, or it can be done different. So, uh, just, I agree with you. We have an amazing team, and it's because of people like you being part of that team, the team Roswell that wants to continue to grow with just that, that unification that you bring. You're very appreciated, very worthy, and this is his peers that chose him. That's very important. Your peers thought that much of you to choose you, and I couldn't agree more.
Um, sorry to interrupt. As a son of a veteran and a brother of a veteran, and knowing my time on this dais is coming to an end soon, um, I just wanted to point out how proud I am of this city that we honor our veterans the way that we do. Um, and y'all walked in the city hall today, you probably looked up and saw a banner that shows the employees of the city who are active veterans, and I'm so glad it's not five employees, 10 employees, 20 employees. I mean, I don't, I couldn't count them, but, you know, because I'm not that smart, can't count that high. But I think it was, uh, you know, over 100 employees are, of this city are veterans, and it's just such an honor to serve a city that not only honors their veterans, employs their veterans, and treats them the way that we do. And so, thank you for bringing that to, uh, the, the esteemed veteran award to the city. It means a lot to my family. Um, and I'm just so grateful to live in Roswell and, in a city that honors our veterans the way it does.
Thank you, David. So, uh, tomorrow morning, by the way, probably Sarah and Lee are going to catch this, but I'm going to just do this as an extra. Um, Veterans Day service here tomorrow, 9:15, Julie, 9:30. It's going to be in here. We usually do it at Bill Johnson because of the cold weather, so veterans, families, friends of veterans, come join us tomorrow at 9:30 for a Veterans Day ceremony. The city always does a lovely job of, uh... No, it's, it's not, yeah, the veterans get here at 8:30, the service starts, I think, at 9:30, if I remember right, right? Veterans get here at 8:30 for welcoming, thank you, and then, um, the actual service starts at 9:30, so we hope you'll join us tomorrow. And thank you, David, for, uh, the recognition of all the amazing veterans who work inside the city. So, the next piece is, um, a new item on the mayor's report, which is public comment from Roswell businesses. So, I promised some people, probably some of you may know, we just had an election last Tuesday, and I promised some people during the election that whether win, lose, I didn't know we were going to have a runoff, but win, lose, or runoff, I would, uh, open up a kind of, uh, businesses to speak on regular items. And so, I thought I'd also do a little something extra, which is kind of a 10-minute, if you will, open mic for Roswell businesses during the mayor's, um, section and the mayor's report. So, tonight's the first night. I don't know if we have any businesses here. So, Nancy, I'm going to ask you, do we have any Roswell businesses that want to speak during the, um, this part of the program?
Yes, Mayor, we have four speakers. The first is Nick Patel with HD Wine and Spirits.
And so, and by the way, since I've got 10 minutes, Randy, you've got some tough navigating to do, so I'll break those 10 minutes up into four parts, so that's two and a half minutes. Yes, sir, welcome, Nick. Glad you're here.
I will only take two and a half minutes.
Two and a half, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much, council member. Thank you for, uh, you know, giving me a chance to come say what I have to say. My name is Nick Patel. I own a Roswell, uh, HD Wine and Spirits right on South and London Street. Only one thing on my agenda. Instead of 12:30 PM Sunday sales, let me open at 11:30 AM state law. The reason is Sandy Springs, Alfreda, Eastcom, all of them open at 11:30. Between that one hour, I'm losing at least $400 to $500 business because of DoorDash, Uber Eats, Grubhub. They started delivering, and all those, especially Sandy Springs, it's hurting me so much because once you pass the river, all those stores open at 11:30. I'm the only one that Roswell City is allowing me to open at 12:30. So, that one hour that customers goes to park, lake, hunting, fishing, it's like, hey, man, you're not open until 12:30. Simple English language. I'm going to go over there, pick it up, because I cannot wait one hour with my family, especially it's Sunday. So, all I ask, 11:30, that's all.
Nick? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. And by the way, for those who don't know, Nick's business is on Highway 9, and if you're heading south, uh, going towards Sandy Springs, uh, before you get to, um, what's his name? Before you get to Roswell Junction, yes?
Thank you for that advertise. I like that. I'm not paying you, but thank you.
That's all right. Thanks, Nick. Thank you. That's a very, I appreciate that request very much. Thank you. How much time did we take? Eight and a half, all right. So, we've got eight and a half, so we can divide that by three. All right, who's next? Who's next, Nancy?
Um, we have Lori Crowe with Suspend.
Welcome, Lori.
Pleasure to be here. Um, so basically, I want to first of all say thank you very much to mayor and council for having the vision for the new Roswell Park systems that you put in and you listened to the residents. I can just say thank you because who is Suspend? I am the small business, we have a small business here in Roswell, and I've been a resident for 30 years plus. Um, basically, we are making kayak canoe and stand-up paddleboard carts and more, and we're selling nationally but through REI, LL Bean, and of course, locally. But, um, I wanted to then bring the attention to the Chattahoochee Riverside Park project and Phase 1 being completed. It's such, such a much-needed, um, help or, uh, help to access the river for paddling. So, for that reason, I want to say a big thank you. Now for Phase 2, which I'm also more excited about because you're also putting in the extra-wide bike lanes, and what I'm, I've got a personal excitement on that because we just developed a brand-new cart that you can tow your kayak behind your bike, and nothing's on the market like it, and it's developed right here in Roswell, and we'll be able to utilize these parks, utilize the river because of the easy access, and that also means we're not going to be using up a lot of parking places because you can take your e-bike or your, you know, there's so many ways you can get to the river with your kayak, so that's a plug for my new, our team's been working on it constantly, and REI's going to be our first big customer on it, so that's exciting. Um, but anyway, I just want to say I am so proud to be part of Roswell and getting, especially in having the national recognition of the quality of life and utilizing the Chattahoochee with the easy access to the river. That's what I'm about, that's, we're getting recognized around the country with REI, and we're taking a lot of photos down at the river, so you'll see Roswell in the, uh, in wherever we end up. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Can consumers buy from you?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have a website that you want to consent, send consumers to?
I appreciate you asking. Uh, suspend.com. It's S-U-S-P-E-N-Z as in zebra, dot com. We're right off of Crossville Road, right behind Johnny's Pizza. We're in the, where PGA Golf used to be, and we're the property on below, so we're local. We have a big showroom there, we have it online, and right now, we do support, um, our dealers, which include REI there, and, uh, there's no LL Bean stores here, but that's who we are.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Thank you, thank you very...
My pleasure.
Yes, ma'am. Nancy?
Yes, next is Jason Yowel with Metropolis Homes.
Hello. Um, I, I would like to build on what Lori was talking about with regard to the river. Uh, I understand that the, uh, the dredging effort has kind of died because other local governing authorities and Georgia power have not shown much enthusiasm to join Roswell in the, uh, in the efforts to get the river dredged. I think it's a very important piece of recreation because the river gets shallower and shallower. It's eventually going to choke up all the way down to the Morgan Falls Dam, and the choice is going to be to finally dredge it or take the dam down and let nature dredge it. Um, I, I don't know why, uh, we're not showing more leadership on this. We've got the public frontage that no other local governing authority has. Um, the Chattahoochee is a secret river in most other communities, but not in Roswell. It's very visible. And, um, I, I'd also like to see it activated with some light commercial because it, that's what it takes to make a world-class linear park. Um, other, uh, places like the High Line in New York, the Belt Line, uh, downtown, and even Venice Beach in California, they're linear parks. They've got light commercial, well, New York has heavy commercial, but it brings more people down to the river and gives them, uh, a, a place to get a bite to eat, a drink, and it makes it a more attractive place to spend more time. The Roswell residents go down there, they walk the Riverwalk, and they don't really use the park. I think the park itself, uh, both Azalea and Riverside are used more by, uh, neighboring communities. I also understand that we're on the verge of demolishing Riverside Park, the Spray Park, and the, um, and the, uh, buildings that are there. If, if, if that's true, um, I, I, I saw that plan, uh, years ago, and I thought, well, if somebody put in front of me, "We're going to demolish the Spray Park and move it over here," I'd say, "You're fired. Uh, you, you don't get it. You're just trying to spend money." And if that's the case, tell them they're fired. Thanks.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Um, and that was Metropolis Building. Okay. All right, thank you, Jason. Thank you. Nancy, yes, ma'am?
Uh, yes, Dr. Cara Iavino with One Stop Wellness.
Welcome, Dr. Cara.
Much for the opportunity to speak. I'm actually here to ask for help.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I've been, uh, One Stop Wellness, Chiropractic and Natural Health Care for 11 years in Roswell, and I've been a chiropractor for 25 years and natural doctor, and I've always offered free care for first responders, police, fire, military, teachers, and clergy also. And I have people who are taking advantage of that, but I wanted to come to the people who have the most power and influence and ask you to help me to get the message out to our first responders, teachers, and clergy that they can come and get free care in our, in our clinic. Um, and we were also just voted the number one, if I may, number one weight loss clinic in Roswell and Crab Apple, and we're all non-pharmaceutical, so that's just natural. Going up against Ozempic injections and things, and we still won first place. So, uh, we just want to help people. And, um, so I wanted to ask you all to help me to get the word out. As it happens, my husband is a veteran, he goes to the VA, and I appreciate that he has that ability, but for those who are veterans, we also know that sometimes that falls short as well. Um, and so, I just wanted to offer that and ask for y'all's help in getting that out.
Dr. Cara, thank you. Well, first of all, let's, let's, let's list where you're located and how people can get in touch with you, a website, and if you want to put out an email address as well. Just a website?
Uh, and I am right across from Roswell Junction.
Roswell Junction, pretty good location.
Um, and it's onestopwellness.us.
Onestopwellness.us.
Easy. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
And then, we'll follow up with the comms team and, uh, the public safety team, and that, we greatly appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, my husband is actually, he's an officer in Sandy Springs, so he works very tightly with you all, so thank you.
They do. Thank you, Dr. Cara, so much. Thank you. God bless. All right, thank you, guys. Thank you, businesses, for showing up tonight and coming to speak at our first 10-minute open mic, and so we do appreciate it. We're going to go to the last item under the mayor's report, which is the Roswell Update, which will be presented by council member and pro tem Lee Hills and council member Sarah Beeson. Uh, ladies, the floor is yours. Ladies, the floor is yours.
Appreciate it. As we enter the holiday season, just want to remind residents that roswell365.com remains the central place to find information about community events, programs, and activities happening throughout Roswell. While tonight's presentation focuses on operational progress here at the city, roswell365.com continues to be the resource for staying connected to what is happening in Roswell.
Roswell Results is more than a slogan, it's the city's framework for communicating progress on key initiatives that affects the public, public safety, infrastructure, safer streets, better customer service, and housing. Through Roswell Results, we're showing our residents that the strategy planning, fiscal responsibility, and teamwork lead to real improvements, the kind of change that makes, that make Roswell stronger, safer, and more connected. Tonight, we'd like to share several of the latest milestones across our city that highlight how Roswell Results is coming to life. As always, you're interested in the happenings in Roswell, you can visit roswell365.com to learn about all the events occurring this holiday season.
On October 28th, the city of Roswell hosted a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the official opening of our resident and business services, marking a new era of customer service here at City Hall.
It's located on the ground floor at 38 Hill Street. The resident and business services consolidates multiple service counters into one convenient concierge style location, and it's just to the left of the great big stairs off of the parking lot, or off of the circle.
Services available include utility billing, Recreation and Parks program registration, business licenses, contractor support, and general service assistance. This configuration is intended to improve navigation, reduce confusion, and provide consistent customer experience for residents, businesses, contractors, and visitors.
Just two days later, on October 30th, the city of Roswell joined the Roswell Housing Authority and Development Partner, Penrose, to celebrate the groundbreaking for Roswell Housing Authority redevelopment Phase One, the first step in modernizing and expanding affordable housing options in our community. This transformative project will deliver one hundred and two new, energy-efficient apartment homes on the former site of Pelfrey Pines Apartments at 199 Grove Way. This redevelopment represents a strong partnership among the city, the Housing Authority, and Penrose, the developer, ensuring that residents have access to safe, high-quality housing in one of Georgia's most desirable and connected communities. Through our Community Development Block Grant, which is CDBG program, Roswell is contributing $2 million toward this effort, which also ensures that former Pelfrey Pines residents have the right to return once constructed, construction is complete. When finished, this development will create a total of two hundred and four unit, new units across two phases, and connect seamlessly to nearby amenities, including the Hill Street redevelopment and Hill Rose District, giving residents access to jobs, to jobs, shopping, and recreation within walking distance.
On September 22nd, council approved a $355,471 contract with Inliner Solutions LLC to launch the city's stormwater lining package project with a total budget of $391,018. This project will rehabilitate eighteen stormwater pipes and structures across nine roads throughout Roswell. Using cured-and-place pipe, or CIPP, technology, the city can repair aging infrastructure without full pipe replacement, minimizing disruption to residents while extending the life of our stormwater system.
Work on this project will begin in the coming weeks, and residents may notice construction activity in areas such as Myrtle Street, Roswell Hills Court, King Ridge Drive, Crenwood Cove, and Spring Creek Road and others through the duration of the work. These proactive investments help prevent flooding, protect homes, and keep Roswell resilient.
Construction's underway on the downtown parking deck project, which will bring four hundred new parking spaces for residents, businesses, and visitors.
Mayor Wilson and Senior Vice President of Infrastructure and Deputy City Administrator Sharon Izzo recently released a video update sharing the latest project milestones, from completed stormwater vaults to the upcoming installation of precast panels being built in Acworth.
Project also includes sidewalk pedestrian connectivity improvements linking Green Street and Plum Street and Canton Street. The parking deck is expected to be completed in early 2026. The new Green Street activation plan will further transform the corridor into a one-way, pedestrian-friendly experience that connects downtown destinations in a different way.
And on the topic of pedestrian-friendly experiences, the city of Roswell is advancing a community-wide effort to make local streets calmer, safer, and more enjoyable for everyone through the Slow Down in Roswell program. This initiative combines infrastructure improvements with education and outreach to reduce speeding, improve walkability, and make our streets safer for all users.
The program's Phase One Neighborhood Traffic Calming Matrix and Pilot Program uses five weighted factors: speed, traffic volume, sidewalks, nearby amenities, and neighborhood equity to determine priority areas. Willow Springs, Roswell North, and Edenwild have been selected to begin the pilot in 2026. Approximately $400,000 is included in the 2026 budget to support implementation, along with a new traffic analyst position to support database evaluation. Future phases will expand to local roads and sidewalk networks to ensure every community benefits from safer, more connected streets.
Roswell also recently celebrated the swearing-in of Fire Chief Pabel Trosh and twenty-two new members of the Roswell Fire Department. This milestone marks year four of Roswell's five-year transition to a fully full-time fire department, a major achievement that strengthens emergency response and public safety for everyone who lives, works, and visits our city.
Comprehensive Plan 2045 process is ongoing. Last week, the city held its second public meeting where residents reviewed land use scenarios, housing considerations, and transportation priorities. Community feedback from this phase will be used to shape draft recommendations that will be reviewed in upcoming public engagement rounds. Now, as we close tonight, we want to highlight another exciting innovation, our upcoming city dashboard. Last month, the city hosted two focus groups to gather feedback on the development of this centralized, easy-to-use platform that will allow residents to explore city projects in real time. We would like to extend our thanks to the residents who participated in this focus group for their thoughtful feedback, including John Burrow, Cat Plant, Wes Hills, Ross Kennedy, Courtney Rozier, Angie Claeys, Ryan Goodman, and George Crumley. I'll now turn it over to Communications Director Julie Breckville to share a live demo of the dashboard prototype, which will give everyone a preview of how this new tool will look and function once it is launched.
And as they get teed up, I just want to make one last comment regarding the Roswell Housing Authority redevelopment, this Phase One. This is really groundbreaking in two ways, dirt and in reality, that we're able to do this through a Section 108 loan, which we met with HUD up in DC, and they were stunned that we were taking this on. And that's made possible through the Section 108 loan, which is a CDBG, or Community Development Block Grant, opportunity. And the biggest part about that, beyond putting our residents back, who get the first right of refusal to come back to live here, that we're displaced a year and a half or two ago, closer to two now, is that, which is huge, is that we will be able to pay that loan back, that $2 million with interest, with CDBG funds. So, mayor, when you're back in office, that that will be continued. I know I can't predict what the next board will do, but if that, that $2 million plus the, the interest on that is not paid back with the CDBG funds, then that'll be on the shoulders of the residents to pay that back. So I just wanted to state that it's beautiful that we have not had to put that on the city, on our residents, as a financial burden to do what's right with the Roswell Housing Authority. And I think that's a big milestone, because we're bailing out a federal, a federal project here in the city of Roswell, and it's not at the expense of our residents. So I just thought that was worth saying. Thank you for your leadership, mayor. We had a full count, seven people, mayor and six council members that were in full support of that, and we're very proud of moving forward in, in housing. Thank you, sir. And now to Julie Breckville.
Thanks, Lee. Hey, Julie.
Mayor and council.
Hey.
Thank you. We're really happy to be here tonight to share something we've been working on for quite a while, something Ben and I have wanted to do probably for four or five years, and that is our brand-new project dashboards. This is a big step for us towards, when it comes to giving our community an easy way to see what's going on around the city. The project was truly a team effort. We had staff from all departments all across the city come together, and these are the folks that live and breathe this stuff every single day. This is their jobs. And we got together and we built a single, easy-to-use site that brings everything together in one place. The dashboard pulls in information on all of our city's capital projects, that includes transportation, bond-funded projects, and even private development happening throughout Roswell. Until now, all of that information lived on three separate dashboards, and this new site combines them all into one, so residents can finally get the full picture in one place. It's also mobile-friendly, which was really important, because our old dashboards were not. So whether you're on your phone, or you're on a tablet, or your computer, it scales to fit your screen. So basically, you can check in on what's going on in your neighborhood anytime, anywhere. And there's another great part. This entire project was done in-house. There were no outside consultants, no new software purchases. Our city staff is using a platform that we already own, and that means the only cost to the city was our staff time. One of the best parts of the process was bringing in residents, and I know Sarah named all of them. We pulled together a focus group and asked them to kind of poke around, tell us what worked, what didn't, and what would make it easier to use. And they gave us some really fantastic feedback, and a lot of their ideas made it into the final version. And then you see their names up there on the screen, John Burrow, Cat Plant, Wes Hills, Ross Kennedy, Courtney Rozier, Angie Claeys, Ryan Goodman, and George Crumley. I want to thank all of them for taking time to help us make this tool better for our residents. And before we show you the dashboard, I also want to recognize the team that helped make this happen. There were a lot of us that worked on this. First and foremost, Angelina Tran, she's fantastic. She designed the site, and she made it easy to use and was just a joy to work with. Ben Frye from Communications, who oversaw the project and pulled all the cross-departmental team together. And the rest of our crew, who was involved with this, Lily Joy Tothrow, Caitlin Martin, Mark Dana, Jackie Dible, Jeannie Payton, Michelle Alexander, Jason Mastrata, Greg Nichols, Damian Narenzing, Joe Panini, and of course, Communications Council Liaison, Council Member Sarah Beeson, who stayed involved from day one and helped us guide this process every step of the way. This is a really meaningful project for us in Communications. It gives residents a simple, convenient way to find out about all the projects that are going on in the city, and I think it's something we can all be proud of. And so I'm going to kick this to Ben, so he can show you this little video we put together that explains how this dashboard works.
Welcome to the City of Roswell Project Dashboard. The dashboard landing page provides an overview of all of the projects throughout the city. These projects include capital improvement projects, including bond-funded projects, transportation projects, and private development projects. Navigation features include a map legend to identify the various types of projects throughout the city, map layers that can be turned off and on, an address search function, a glossary of terms, a user guide, and city contact information. Within the All Projects view, any item on the map can be selected for a brief project overview, which includes a link to the detailed project description. Within any of the individual project maps, such as the Capital and Bond Projects Map, a list of projects is also available to aid in quickly locating a project. As an example, let's look at the project details for the Big Creek Greenway Boardwalk. The project details include: the date and time the project details were last updated by city staff, the current project status, the next phase of the project, which in this case is not applicable, because this project has been completed, the estimated construction start and completion dates, as well as the actual construction start and completion. Also included are the estimated and actual cost for the project, the funding sources for the project, the project location, type, and contact information, a detailed description of the project, including external links when applicable, the project location on a map, and an image gallery. Return to project list brings you back to the previous dashboard project list. The transportation projects map works similarly. However, instead of the individual pins, most projects are represented by solid or dashed lines to better indicate the project location. The rest of the functionality is the same, with the project details including the project schedule, financials, type, contact, description, external links, map, and image gallery. The dashboard also includes private development projects. However, due to the private nature of these projects, only basic project information is included in the project details, which does include: the project status, a city staff member as a contact, a link to the project plans or other related documents, and links to upcoming meetings when applicable. The City of Roswell Project Dashboard, making it easy to explore, track, and stay connected to the projects shaping our community.
Thank you, mayor and council, for your continued support. This is a project that we've worked with you on for a few years, and we're really happy to be able to roll this out to the community, and we can't wait for residents to start using it. So if you have any questions, we're here to answer them, Ben and I, so.
Well, Julie, Ben, thank you. That's pretty cool. We've been working, a long time coming, man, four years. It's sweet to see it. I love it. That's so cool. Thank you. That's awesome. Thank you to everybody who's a part of this, all the citizens who are a part of this, staff, thank you. Sarah, thank you. That's really good stuff, man. That's really cool. That's so awesome. I'm so excited about people using that. Thank you. Great job, Julie. Great job, Ben. That's really cool. Yeah. Yeah, I hope that's going to be transformative for the communication. That's so cool. Thank you. All right. That ends the mayor's report. It was a good way to end it. And we move on to the consent agenda. And there's only one item. Let's see. Nancy, are there any Roswell residents who'd like to speak on the consent agenda?
No speakers.
Thank you. Are there any Roswell businesses that would like to speak on the consent agenda? I know I didn't give that to you before, Nancy, but I'll ask, any Roswell businesses would like to address the consent agenda? All right. Thank you. I will call, does council have any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by my councilmember, Mortland. Do I have a second? Second by councilmember Johnson. All in favor of approving the consent agendas, please do so by raising your hands. Let the record show that the vote is four to zero, and unanimous, and the consent agenda passes. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the regular agenda. City Clerk Nancy Long, would you please read the first item under the regular agenda?
Yes, mayor. This item is ZMC C1025-00002 for conditional use for Up Massage located at 10504 Alpharetta Highway. This will be presented by Chief of Police James Conroy.
Thanks, Nancy. Welcome, chief.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a conditional use application for Up Massage 10504 Alpharetta Highway. The owner of Up Massage is requesting approval of a conditional use permit for a massage establishment to provide massage therapy treatments at this location. This is an existing business undergoing a change of ownership, which requires it to go through this conditional use application process. The police department has completed their background investigation and already issued a massage establishment license. The applicant has completed all the community development requirements, and tonight is the final step in that process. Staff recommends approval of this item.
Thank you, Chief Conroy. City Clerk Nancy Long, are there any Roswell residents who'd like to speak on this item?
Yes, we have one speaker, Anthony Tuskwith.
Thanks, Anthony. Thank you, sir. Any Roswell businesses would like to address the matter? Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments or questions? Yes, Lee Hills. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Chief, this was a previous establishment of the same genre, correct?
Correct. It's just undergoing a change of ownership.
And that's within the timeframe that, that we've set forth, correct?
Correct. They, they just closed, I think, a week, a week ago, so.
Has to be less than three months, is that correct?
Correct. And they've been closed less than a week.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Any thoughts, comments, or questions from council? Very good. Do I have, do I have a motion? Motion by councilmember Johnson. Do I have a second? Second by councilmember Beeson. All those in favor of approving the motion as stated, please do so by raising your hands. Let the record show that the vote is four to zero, and unanimous, and the motion passes. Thank you very much, chief. Congratulations. Nancy, would you please read the second item on the regular agenda?
This is approval for the mayor or city administrator to approve the contract authorization with Garland DBS in the amount of $2,412,263 for the replacement of the existing roof at the Crab Apple Center with a total budget allocation of $2,653,489. This will be presented by Recreation and Parks Director Stephen Malone.
Thank you, Nancy. Welcome, Stephen.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This project... This project remains an integral part of the phased plan for the Crab Apple Center, enabling our teams to address several program expansion needs across gymnastics, performing arts, and athletics. Within the last four years, we've experienced a 21% growth in gymnastics participation and an 80% growth in performing arts enrollment, underscoring the demand and importance of these planned facility improvements. As you can see in the graph in front of you, we're currently in Phase Two of this process, and you'll see all the items that we're addressing in this phase. The Crab Apple Center is 127,000-square-foot facility supporting Recreation and Parks programming. Replacing the existing roof is essential to protect the city's long-term investment and ensure the continued safe, reliable use of this building. We've conducted multiple third-party inspections, which have been completed on the facility's existing roof system. Inspections identified over 100 active leaks across three separate sections of the roof. These assessments have also identified significant moisture penetration throughout the three identified sections. You'll notice these are a few of the deficiencies that we've identified as far as age and mineral loss, leaking, flashing, saturated insulation, which obviously leads to potential mold and structural concerns if unaddressed. So our recommendation is a full replacement of sections B, C, and D. The new system would be a modified Budiman system, which provides a 30-year warranty, which also includes insulation upgrades and improved drainage around the facility. This image identifies those three sections, B, C, and E, that we're recommending for replacement. These are several of the outcome and benefits. You'll obviously note eliminating any of these leaks will prevent and protect future use of this space for future programming. It improves the energy efficiency and drainage performance, extends the facility lifecycle, and reduces maintenance costs. This supports uninterrupted city programming, including the performing arts expansion. This gives you the financial overview. Total budget allocation, $2,653,489, with the contract authorization of $2,412,263. Funding source would be from the 2022 bond program. This gives you the project timeline. We're at the mayor and council approval November 10th. If we're approved tonight, we'll go to contract sign estimated December 1st, with construction to begin estimated around January 26, completion estimated April 2026. It's important to note that this roof replacement will run parallel to the pickleball court installation that's also being done on-site. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Director Malone. Thank you for the presentation. As always, City Clerk Nancy Long, are there any Roswell residents who'd like to speak on this item?
There is no comment.
Thank you so much. Any Roswell businesses would like to speak on the item? Yeah, Jason, if you'll go give a card to Nancy real quick? Yes, sir, for that item. Yes, sir. If you go give her a card, she'll call you up. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. Any other Roswell businesses? Kat, are you on this one? Yeah, if you'll go to Nancy and give her a card. Yes, ma'am. Nancy, you got Kat? Did you call her up? Did you announce her? Yes, ma'am. Kat, welcome.
Okay, thank you. Do we... Good evening.
Hi.
Do we know what else is going on in the school? Like, I know they said that this will extend the life of the building and all, but with 100 leaks, you're already getting mold damage, or, you know, possible mold damage. Do we know, like, the complete scope of what all repairs are going to be required at the school? Because I was in there the other day, getting some props for the theater, and like a dungeon in there. It's a little scary. And so I know anytime you get like an old building, there's a lot of stuff that you don't really know until you get in there. So I just worry about, like, how big of a money pit this is going to be.
Thank you so much, Kat. Thank you. Stephen?
Mayor, I'm happy to address that question. So with any city property purchase, we always go through an assessment process where we'll do an inspection of the property or the facility. And while we did do that assessment with this facility specifically, it identified many of the aged infrastructure items associated with this facility. Until we actually got in there and were able to conduct a third-party analysis, that's where we came up with our recommendation for the specific roof replacements across the entirety of those sections that we've identified. There are inherently going to be other infrastructure items that we'll have to address as we go through that process. We have been able to get in there and do an analysis, so we put together a timeline of the useful life of many of those infrastructure items, specifically HVAC. That's going to be an item that we will look at. Currently, all the HVAC as it relates to AC in the summertime is functioning, but we also recognize that some of those units are aging out, so we're going to have to put a timeframe of replacement for some of those as we look ahead into the future. Additionally, you'll notice in Phase Three, we have a very large lift where we will begin the renovations within that space, which will involve converting many, eight of the classrooms into dance studios, as well as the cafeteria into a small performance space. So a lot of those renovations are coming secondary after the roof replacement, specifically because we want to make sure the roof is sound before we start doing any of the interior work.
So I think you've identified, I think, some of those in the past. Maybe just for future reference, you can come back, identify all of them, the lifespan on each of them, the appropriate replacement cost, et cetera. Just so we can illuminate it again for everybody. I think that'd be very helpful.
Yes, sir.
I think that's the kind of question, like, hey, what else is out there? So I think you know what else is out there. So if you can outline the timetable and replacement costs, and when we think that's going to happen, that'd be awesome. Thank you, Stephen. Thank you for the question, Kat. All right, yes, sir.
Director Malone, a lot of what the mayor was just discussing, we have in the packet in front of us tonight. We've got the building envelope assessment, the roof assessment, moisture and scan report, the moisture diagnostic survey report, and several other things in here. So a lot of the questions that the residents may have is in our packet tonight and is readily available for their reading.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. All right. Does council have any thoughts, comments, or questions on the matter? Nancy, if you'll call Jason up?
Yes, Jason Yell.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Welcome, Jason.
I didn't realize I only got three minutes last time. But anyway, so the... When Jacobs, who is the consultant for the bond projects, they did an assessment, and they said that it would cost $58 million to renovate the entire building. That's a lot of money. And I'm just wondering, did they ever do an assessment on what the full demolition cost would be for the building?
Is that your question? Any other questions?
Well, that's one question.
Okay.
I mean, I've never thought this was a...
Stephen, are you writing that question down?
I've never thought that this was a great buy, because other local governing authorities, when they came into existence in the last 10, 20 years, were able to buy certain Fulton County assets basically for a dollar. And those were the parks, the fire stations. And Fulton County wanted to originally sell them at market value, and they were told, well, I believe we've already paid for these things. And so the settlement was they bought them for a dollar. And now granted, the Fulton County Board of Ed is a slightly different entity from Fulton County proper. The same process applies. And when the building came up for sale, I think the conversation should have been, we'll buy it for a dollar. Because Fulton County's already established that precedent, and the fact of the matter is, we, the people of Roswell, we've paid for this building probably many times over. And you have an albatross that you want to get rid of. You don't want the maintenance of it. You can't really sell it to anybody else because of the zoning, and we would not be compelled to accommodate a rezoning application to make it, for example, residential. So I think we paid too much for this, and I don't think you went in with your eyes wide open about what's the demolition cost. I don't know if the Jacobs report on the renovation cost was done before the building was closed, but just because you bought it for less than they were asking doesn't mean you got a good deal. I think that you should have gotten it for a dollar, especially if we knew what the demolition cost would be. It really changes things. And that is not an inexpensive building to tear down and haul off, if that's what you're going to do. But it sounds like you're going to be nickelled and dimed renovating this thing piece by piece by piece. And it sounds like just not a happy outcome financially. Wow, I did that in three minutes. All right.
Thank you, Jason. Welcome, Stephen.
So I would... Well, sorry. Happy to address.
I think there was one question.
So for the cost for a full demolition of the Crab Apple Center, I do not believe I have that figure. I don't believe the city has ever gone through the exercise of acquiring a price estimate for a full demolition.
That's correct, sir. It was never part of the consideration. Thank you so much, Stephen. All right. Any other... Yes, ma'am?
Yes, we have Lindsay Coats.
Yes. So I wanted to address this as well. I'm just looking for where can I find overall budget to rehab this building? Is that somewhere that the residents can see? Do we have a budget number assigned for the total rehab of the building? I'm going into the gymnastics building now. I understand the need for this, and typically I, like, will defend the soccer stuff all day long. But I know that that is later on in the agenda. And now that I'm going into that gym building because of my little ballerina, I recognize that that also needs an overhaul. The gymnastics program is busting at the seams, and I'm wondering if we do have budget numbers for this total rehab on this building in particular.
Thank you.
Happy to address. I think the slide up on the screen is a great indication of the process that we're following as it relates to program expansions. We currently have the dollar set aside to do the roof repairs, as well as the interior classroom renovations to support the performing arts expansion into the Crab Apple Center. That moves us into Phase Three, which will begin the process of the new vehicular access road from the Crab Apple Center into Roswell Area Park and that front area beautification. That will take some design work as we go into the summer of 2026 that will establish a cost for that vehicular driveway into Roswell Area Park from the Crab Apple Center. We'll also be looking at the fall of 2026, where we will begin the removal of all the fencing around the facility, kind of creating that park atmosphere that really makes it adjacent to the Roswell Area Parks. It gives you that park feel. And then in the fall of 2026, that's when we'll begin going back into the physical activity center, as Ms. Coats actually addressed, so that we can start to look at those areas that were vacated by the performing arts program that we'll be able to renovate and then expand the gymnastics program into that space. We currently have funding set aside for several of those phased approaches. Everything you see on the screen in front of you, understanding that there will be some design elements that we'll need to go through in order to make sure that we're dialed in on exactly what those renovations and those costs will look like.
Where did Julie and Ben go? So is that in the new... Okay. Will, you want to address that? To tell everybody? Because I think that's the question. The answer to the question.
So on the website that we discussed earlier, the Roswell Connections, that is part of some of the subsections on there with the bond results. Crab Apple Center is, I mean, just go through it layer by layer by layer, and I think it lines up very well with Director Malone's forecast here, Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, and gives pretty clear guidance around what to expect as we go through this in a phased approach, as compared to just completely tearing it down and rebuilding from scratch. It does set the tone for this project to see full completion by a certain time.
Thank you, Will.
Yes, sir.
There's additional comment I think you might have. Roswellgov.com...
Slash dashboard.
Slash dashboard. That'll be the answer to your question. Thank you so much. Appreciate that very much. Thank you, Director Malone. It's not on there yet. I'm sure Julie and Ben will be getting it up shortly per their presentation, if they're requested. Thank you so much. All right. Counsel, are there any other... Any other speakers, Nancy?
Speakers.
Thanks so much. All right. Does council have any comments or questions? Counselmember Lee Hills.
Yes, thank you. Director Malone, I had asked about this before, but just for the sake of the audience, the roof repair will not impede any further or future projects that we have on board at this time, right?
That is correct. Yes, ma'am. We're able to do this project in conjunction with not only the pickleball courts that are being installed on-site, but also it'll allow our interior renovations to sort of run in parallel. We'll be able to get in there shortly after the first of the year and start to really dig into when we can start that timeline.
Well, I know we are entertaining, but investigating, I should say, some other opportunities with our special needs community, potentially doing an expanded adaptive programming there on one end of the building. So that's what sparked the question to begin with. And then potentially something with woodworking, feeding into the trade industry, which is a really unique and interesting opportunity for the City of Roswell and for our kids that may not pick the so-called traditional. I think this may become more traditional going forward. But I just was asking Director Malone about that, outfitting those, if those do come to fruition, because we're still in the investigative program. I know working, I think, with Georgia Woodworking Guild, talking with them about some opportunities, and then some of these other things that we've been able to pull off in parses without killing a budget and fix things up, repair, and outfit them appropriately so that we can take the stress off of gymnastics, bring the dance in there. So I applaud that. But it doesn't compromise the money we're spending on the roof that we'd have to go back and redo roof work because of what we're talking about in theory and activating in reality, correct?
Yes, ma'am. We're very, very strategically going through that timeframe. Again, the roof being the very first step to ensure whatever improvements get made further down the road on the interiors protect.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Any thoughts, comments, or questions from counsel? Thanks very much. Do I have a motion? Motion? Would you make the motion for me, please, Willie, sir? Sorry.
Motion to approve for the mayor or city administrator to approve the contract authorization with Garland DBS in the amount of $2,412,263 for the replacement of the existing roof at the Crab Apple Center with a total budget allocation of $2,653,489.30.
Thank you, Will. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hills. All in favor is the motion stated by Councilmember Mortland. Please do so by raising your hands. Let the record show that the vote is four to zero, and unanimous, and the motion passes. Thank you very much. City Clerk Nancy Long, would you please read item three on the agenda?
Yes, this is approval for the mayor or city administrator to approve the contract authorization with Musco Sports Lighting LLC utilizing the Sourcewell Contract 041123MSL in the amount of $3,658,500 for the LED light conversion for athletic fields and racket courts with a total budget allocation of $4,272,75. with a total budget allocation of $4,207,275. This will be presented by Recreation Parks Director Stephen Malone.
Thanks so much, Nancy. Welcome again, Stephen.
Mayor, I'm going to apologize in advance for that you're going to get your fill of me tonight. So apologies for how many times I'm going to be up here in front of you. But a lot of great projects that we're bringing before you tonight. This one is another very innovative project that we love to kind of look at as we look ahead and how we're innovating into our programming and how we're operating. This project will modernize our aging metal halide system with LED light fixtures systemwide. That's all of our athletic fields and racket courts. The only ones that will not be updated throughout this process would be Hembry Park and the Grimes Bridge Soccer Fields, and I'll get into a little more detail about that in a minute. This project includes the installation of 699 new LED light fixtures on 167 poles. That just gives you the scope and the range of this project. To give you a little background, in 2021, we partnered with the Roswell Soccer Club to install a pilot LED light system on the Grimes Bridge Soccer Fields. In the almost four and a half, almost five years now that those lights have been in use, we have received zero complaints and zero maintenance costs associated with operating those lights in addition to reducing staff hours due to the remote scheduling feature that came with this system. Give you a few of the key benefits that come along with this integration of the LED conversion. It saves about 54% in the reduction of our power usage on an annual basis. The annual energy savings is approximately $36,000 a year that we would be saving with these new lights. Operational savings, meaning we would be able to reduce our need to have part-time staff there flipping the lights on and off by greater than 25%, which equates to about $42,000 a year. The overall infrastructure impact, it lowers the load and extends the equipment life for that extended infrastructure item. Some of the cool, really, technology and control items that come with this integration, it has the benefit of it includes what's called Control Link, which allows for remote access to turn the lights on and off. So again, reducing the need to physically have a person there to flip a switch on and off to turn the fields on, our athletic fields and courts on and off. This system also comes with a 24/7, 365 days a year, remote monitoring and support along with a 15-year comprehensive warranty covering both materials and labor. It's important to note that this monitoring and support generally is going to recognize and identify light outages before maybe even staff would know. They will generally send us an email and let us know that there's been an outage and they've already scheduled the replacement, and this is the day they'll be out there to do that replacement. And again, that all falls within that 15-year comprehensive warranty. As you look at the 10-year review of those cost-saving measures, the 10-year energy savings equate to about $361,000. 10-year staff efficiency gains is $420,000. And the 10-year maintenance savings, which we average about $55,000 a year in just going out and replacing those metal halide lights and making sure they're operational, that would be about $550,000 over a 10-year period. Your total return on investment for that 10 years is approximately $1,331,000, just to give you some quick 10-year numbers. The financial review of this item, the total budget allocation, $4,180,250. That includes a 15% contingency. Contract authorization is $3,635,500, all funded through the bond allocation. There is no impact to the city's general fund. And I think it's important to note that by combining all the LED light conversions into a citywide project, rather than completing them park by park under the bond program, the city anticipates a cost savings of approximately $1 million. This gives you the project timeline. We are currently here tonight, November 10. If approved, we will go to contract sign around December 1. Instruction begins January 2026 with a project completion of about eight months, which would take us to August 2026. And we are very excited about this project, so happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Director Malone. City Clerk Nancy Long, are there any Roswell residents who'd like to speak on this item?
Yes, we have one speaker, Kat Plant.
Welcome, Kat.
Minor thing. I think this is probably really great. I think it's going to be good for electricity savings and all that. But I just have a question about the part-time staff, the $42,000 a year that we're saving by not flipping on and off lights. That seem real, doesn't seem realistic. I don't know about that. $42,000 that we spend on people turning on and off lights. Okay, if you say so.
Happy to address that question. Currently, we have multiple parks at different locations throughout our system. So generally, logistically, we try to combine part-time help in the evenings that are able to go over multiple locations. With this new lighting system, we'll effectively be able to reduce that to two staff members that'll be on on the clock each night, one on the east side of town, one on the west side of town. That significantly reduces the total number of part-time assistants that's needed generally on an evening basis, which averages about six to eight staff members on an evening to make it around to all the different facilities to flip on lights. Because while turning on and off lights may not sound like a big deal, when you have the significant number of fields that we do over the mass logistics, the locations that we have, there is absolutely no way that one person can get around to all those fields to flip on lights at 6:45 in order to have them operational for all the programming needs that would be out there.
Thank you, Director Malone. Any Roswell businesses who'd like to address the matter? Thank you so much, counsel. Bring it back to you. Any comments or questions on the matter? If not, do I have a motion? Yes, ma'am? Yes, sir. Counselor, Counselor Mothlin, sorry.
Director Malone, during committee, we touched on the warranty, the 15-year warranty. Can you touch on that one more time so everybody can understand what kind of great deal we were able to pull together on this warranty piece?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. I really appreciate that question. So typically speaking, when the any contractor is coming in and they're installing light fixtures on light poles that are already present, and we have gone through a very extensive process of updating our light poles from those wooden telephone pole-looking structures to concrete. We've done that over about a 10- to 15-year period, so most of our light poles are all concrete. There's no real need to replace them. When any contractor comes in and wants to put their product on a pre-established pole, they wanted to reduce that warranty 10 years. We were able to negotiate that up, so we were actually able to get a pretty significant discount on the overall cost as well as getting five more years out of their warranty program to get us to that 15-year warranty.
Thank you, Will. Any other thoughts, comments, or questions from counsel? If not, is there a motion on the matter? Counsel Member Mothlin, I think stated earlier, Nancy, you've read the motion perfectly, so we won't, sorry, I won't do that to you again. So you want to make a motion on item number three, sir?
Motion to approve item number three.
Thank you very much. Is there a second? Second by Counsel Member Johnson. All in favor of approving item number three, as stated earlier by City Clerk Nancy Long, please do so by raising your hands. Let the record show that the vote is four to zero and unanimous, and passes. Thank you very much. City Clerk Nancy Long, would you please read item number four?
Yes, this is approval for the mayor or city administrator to award a contract to Precision Turf LLC for the Grimes Bridge Soccer Fields Construction Project in an amount of $3,564,554.32 and project budget authorization of $3,989,870.32. This will be presented by Environmental Public Works Director Brian Watson, but that's not Brian.
Thanks, Nancy. Welcome, Stephen. I thought it was Brian, too.
I told you you were going to get your fill of me tonight, and I promise this is the last item that I'll speak on. And I do want to acknowledge and how grateful I am to be supported here by our CIP team, Brian Watson and Corinne as well, who've been here throughout this, Corinne Valentine, who's been here throughout this whole process. So we'll sort of split this presentation up amongst the two teams because as as we've worked together, this is very much a collective project between the two. Give you a little background. This project involves the conversion of the two natural grass fields at Grimes Bridge Park to artificial turf. Additional improvements with this project include the removal and replacement of the retaining wall between the two fields and the rehabilitation and expansion of the current stormwater system based on best management practices. Some background on these fields. They were originally constructed in the early 2000s. While the natural grass surface has significantly improved over the past five years, there are still a large amount of rainouts on an annual basis that we have to program around. Additionally, these fields must be closed from December to January and then again in June to August to allow our teams to do an annual natural turf replacement that gets these fields operational for the additional eight months out of the year. The expected lifespan of these artificial turf fields is 10 years with proper maintenance. It saves staff time roughly 29 hours a week from February through November that takes our teams, that allows us to reallocate them to other needs and priorities. This full-size soccer field meets the requirements of our Developmental Players League, which is the home of our current, all of our select soccer programs. Extended field usage, obviously, these fields allow our programs to be able to use the field year-round in a lot of multiple different configurations, so it doesn't have to be one singular age group. We can actually get multiple age groups out there on these fields. The artificial turf specifics, this is the same system that is currently installed on all of our other athletic turf fields. It's a three-layer turf system, similar to the ones you've seen us introduce at Roswell Area Park, East Roswell, and Grove Way. There's an eight-year warranty that comes with this artificial turf. And again, that's helpful as we look at a 10-year useful life. This gives you the activities around this area, gives you a great overview of where the project will take place. The activities and access to the Adult Recreation Center, which is adjacent to these fields, will not be disrupted during this construction process. Parking spaces adjacent to the fields will be accessible to the public. So I think it's important to note that the Adult Recreation Center and its adjacent parking spaces will still remain open during this process. There will be a temporary one-way in and out for vehicular traffic through Grimes Bridge and the Grove Way Parks. And we will have some parking spaces that are right there in front of the fields that will have to go offline in order to stage some of the construction and its material. In addition to the turf, sorry, in addition to the replacement of the natural grass to artificial turf, we will also be doing several stormwater enhancements and a cleanup of the current detention pond that is on-site based on best management practices. I'm going to turn it over now to Corinne Valentine, who is in our CIP department and who will go through the procurement and the project timeline.
Thank you. So as Dr. Malone, Director Malone, you're not a doctor.
Doctor's fine.
Pay for that. I know, as you mentioned, we've been working on this ever since I joined the city about three and a half months ago. This is the first project we've been able to present to you while working together, and there will be more. So as posted is the solicitation process that we went through with this project. We solicited in September, and it closed. We had three bids between $3,464,000 and some change to $3,909,000 and some change. And we want to recommend. What's the word?
Precision turf.
Yeah, yeah, picking Precision Turf LLC as the lowest responsible responsive bidder. So here's our timeline. Today, we are at November 10 for mayor approval from mayor and council. And just like it's almost inexact with the lights, getting a signed contract if it is approved in December, starting in January with an eight-month completion in August.
Real quick, I think I want to make sure we mention the timeline is so critical with this project. If we're able to stay on track, this, the fields will complete, and we'll open them by the fall of 2026. And that's kind of important because, as we all know, the World Cup is coming to Atlanta over the summer of 2026. So we'll have a big soccer boom in the summer of 2026, and we'll be ready and open for operations specifically across all of our soccer facilities for the fall program.
Thank you, Director Malone. Thank you, Corinne. Thank you very much. City Clerk Nancy Long, are there any Roswell residents who'd like to speak on this item?
Yes, we have three speakers. The first is Roman Pierzak.
Welcome, Roman.
I was personally involved in the turf here in Roswell when I found out that the first turf have recycling tire particles, which I already mentioned here are toxic carcinogenic. I know you had another field, but I know now you're adding without those particles, I hope. It will not have toxicity. And I recommend also to replace all the field that have toxic particles. In the con, in the contract, including maintenance or not? Contract includes the maintenance by the company or not? I would like to know. Precision Turf LLC is such an option, as they indicate. We specialize in every aspect of certain and maintaining athletic playing field. This include or not? I would like to know.
Roman, I'm sorry. What was the last question? I apologize. I will make sure I got your last question.
The question is if in the contract is that the company, the installing installment, have also maintenance on the field?
Thank you, sir.
Or somebody else will take maintenance and probably is not familiar how to take care of it. I would like to know also where the city, in the city decided to use artificial turf or natural turf? What was the reason? I heard some explanation here, but it doesn't express. According to my research, natural turf or grass costs 40% less than artificial. If the cost is $4 million approximately, then a natural turf or grass will save $1.6 million. Artificial turf lasts average seven years. The company, and I did study all over the nation, it's seven years, depending how much you use. Company is giving eight years warranty. If we, if we divided the 1.6 million by seven years, it means that we have $229,000 per year to maintain the natural grass. Artificial turf curates constantly after each game during the years and need to be replaced again and cost again. As compared to natural grass, it can last much longer in property. As we said, our grass in this field lasts five years, got better, probably better maintenance. Natural turf is also environmentally friendly compared to artificial turf that is sometimes toxic. We have soccer field that contain particles of recycling tires, what I said. And I would like to remove them first before putting all this, oh, spend money for the bonds to replace immediately those fields. I don't want from the kids to get cancer, that's what all yours reported, a specific leukemia. And I mentioned here a year ago. The natural grass is not so hot as artificial one. And in discussing here, there was kind of a cooling arti- of a cooling artificial grass, basically the cooling is water. Like we are working in the garden and we are sweating, our bodies secrete water and cooling all the body because the water evaporating, the same thing happening with the grass. And it's my opinion, you should consider your plan, even with the same company, and I was searching, the company is very good, they have recommendation, they're working all over the nation, they're doing very good job, and they do also natural turf or grass. And I think from our health, we should use natural grass and not artificial. Natural grass also create oxygen and absorb CO2, which our air is contaminated. Thank you.
Thank you, Roman, thank you, sir, appreciate those comments. Director Malone, can you answer some of the questions that Roman posed?
Yes, sir, and just so you know, all excellent questions, and I'm so thankful that they were brought up. Just to be clear, all of our field turf and field material, that includes the sand-based crumb rubber, they meet or exceed what's called the stringent EN 713 requirements that's used in validating the safety of children's toys and material. So that's the first step of this evaluation that we've gone through on the material. Based on those evaluations, there's literally no detection either of low levels or limited PFAs in any of the synthetic turf components, so it does not represent a human health risk to those using the synthetic ball fields. That's what all the research has shown us, we have all the collaborating research that's been done, including those by the EN 713. So great question, one that we take very seriously, but we are very confident in the product that we're putting out there on the field. I think the second question I heard was, does this contract include maintenance of the, ongoing maintenance of the fields? And the answer to that question is no. Our teams are specifically trained with the right equipment to get out there, to take care of this turf on a regular basis to allow for extended lifespan of the product. I think I also was trying to take notes, I would argue that in our research, artificial turf, while it does have costs and maintenance associated with it, over the long term is very equal in maintenance costs associated with our natural grass fields, especially when you consider grass itself, purchase of the maintenance, ongoing maintenance fertilizer, fuel and equipment, staff hours that's used to be out there, all of those factors equate to a relatively net zero versus artificial and natural grass ongoing for the long term. I think the question was asked, this product generally has a useful life of an average of 10 years. We've stretched that to 12 and 13 years. With good maintenance, we can get that out of those fields. So overall, I think we see somewhere in the average of about 10 to 12 years useful life. We do get eight out of those, 10 to 12 years would be under warranty, which would replace any defects, tears, anything that might come with the product itself, but not the ongoing maintenance.
I think you also asked a question, who made the decision to use artificial turf versus grass?
Great, great question. We've done our internal analysis, and we can't argue with, when the opportunity presents itself, we do have internal conversations all the time about how great it is to play on natural grass fields. We do love that, it provides a great playability, but when you're scheduling fields seven days a week for six to eight hours a day in all conditions for recreation programming, it creates many, many challenges for a natural grass field, specifically keeping it up and making it playable day in and day out for our participants. So what happens in those instances is those fields have to go offline, as I mentioned previously, we have to take them offline for at least four months out of the year, just to keep kind of cut in new grass so that it's ready for when the season comes about. That's four months those fields go offline. With artificial turf fields, we don't have to take those fields offline, and we can continue to play on them year-round. That is not the case with natural turf. We get the pop-up thunderstorms that come on the Georgia afternoons. Typically, that's going to wash out a field where we can't use it for the evening. With artificial turf, that's not the case. So for us, it becomes a little bit more of a programmatic decision of, do we want to provide more opportunities for our program participants to be engaged in our programs? Yes, by providing artificial turf, it gives us the latitude to offer more opportunities along those lines.
I think to your point, I'll just echo what you said, I think everybody, don't think there's any exception to this, would prefer grass. I don't think there's any exception to that. Everybody would prefer grass, and that this question you have to make is, do I want to provide as much playtime for as many kids as possible? And that's really kind of the decision, it's kind of weighting that balance, and the balance is, I think we've made the decision as a city that we want to provide more playtime for more children, more kids, more families, and we've tried to balance that out, but we keep finding that natural turf keeps taking out time, more and more time from kids, which means it's basically a practical decision is how can we provide more playtime?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Director Malone. City Clerk Nancy Long, would you ask the next Roswell resident to join us?
Yes, next is Jason Yow.
My observation, kind of funny. So do the, with the bond issue, do you have variable term tranches, or is everything a 30-year term? On the bond issue? Are all the bonds 30-year term, or are there tranches with variable terms, 10, 20 years?
Yes, sir, we got that question down, we'll answer it, next question.
Okay, well, because my concern is, we're buying a capital asset with 10-year useful life, and if everything is a 30-year bond, like buying a car with a 15-year loan, doesn't make a lot of financial sense. That's my point, thank you.
Thank you so much, Jason, appreciate that so much. Bill, you want to address the first one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Our first tranche issued in 2023 was for a 30-year life. Our second tranche in 2025 was matched up with a 28-year life, and the payments are structured so that they are not level payments, they vary based on expected cash flows to the cities and things like that, but they are fixed obligations over those two periods. So in essence, they will mature at the same time because of the two-year gap between the tranche issuance.
Thank you so much, Bill. And while you're there, Director Malone, do you want to address the capital asset expenditure of 10 years, 10-year life?
I think it's a great, a great question and one that we've been taking very seriously. I think what we're looking at long-term for all capital items is that cyclical replacement plan, where we're not seeing, you know, the whole reason that we had the conversation regarding the 2020 bond referendum was to address longstanding infrastructure items that needed to be addressed, and they were getting to a critical threshold. I think long-term, the plan is to put these on a cyclical replacement program where we're not having to address such a large amount of maintenance, operation issues all at one time. We can do that over a multi-year program, potentially 10, 15 years even.
I think I'll ask the Vice President Leatherman and kind of echo what you're saying. So in 2022, the city made an assessment based upon operational needs and basically infrastructure requirements of items that were required at that time, and there was a financial, there was a dollar figure put to that. Jeff, Vice President Leatherman, you want to address that just real quick, because it does kind of address, why are you doing such and such? And the real reason is you're beginning to catch up, just beginning, preliminary catch up.
Thank you for the question. So as we looked at long-term deferred maintenance when we were placing and doing the analysis on the original bond question, we saw anywhere between 200, $200,000 to $250,000 just in the parks side of the, of our parks and facilities, and then another.
You meant 250 million?
Sorry, 250 million, sorry. Yeah, that's a big difference. And, and that was really what we were seeing in 2020, and as we continue to see, and you've seen the growth of our community, a lot of our parks and facilities were built in the, you know, mid-'80s into the '90s, and so you're reaching that 30-year, 35-year useful life right now. And so, you know, we made the strategic decision to go after about $107 million, 20 of that was sidewalk-related in our parks and sidewalk question, leaving $87 million out of the need of 200 to 250 million dollars. So the ongoing deferred maintenance will continue to be a challenge that we will be addressing, along with Mr. Godshaw, and as Mr. Malone had mentioned, looking at a strategy from a 10-year useful life perspective, but also 15 and 20, continuing to set aside money for deferred maintenance in our financial strategy will be paramount in the next few years coming up.
Thanks, Jeff, excellent answer. All right, appreciate it, gentlemen, thank you, Bill, thank you, Director Malone. City Clerk Nancy Long, would you please ask the next Roswell resident to join us?
Yes, Gus Haydorn.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I applaud your shift to the LEDs. Anything that uses less energy these days is a good thing. I don't know a lot about artificial turf, I've never played on it, but I've been reading a lot about it that raises an alarm for me, and the gentleman that spoke first raised some of the concerns that I've read about, the hazardous chemicals, PFAS, zinc, and lead as well. And I know the heat is an issue on artificial turf, raises the temperature several degrees, I understand. And the microplastics, you know, all of this, whether it's chemical or whether it's microplastics, it eventually ends up in our waterways, so, and then if we replace these every 10 years, I remember seeing the, the stuff when it was being staged to go on a different field. It's, it's a lot of material, and it will eventually end up, of course, in the landfills. But some of the concerns that I'm also reading about is some of the pro players are now refusing to play on it because, because of injuries. Grass is a lot more forgiving than the artificial turf is. The Netherlands is phasing it out altogether, I don't know how many other countries are, but, and then, of course, just the, the expense, I mean, that figure was rather staggering to ensure that there's a ready field constantly for anybody that wants to play. So I just hope that we're doing work here that we're going to be living with for a long time, that's gonna, that's not going to be hazardous to the health of our players or their, our environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus, thank you for those thoughts, and well said. Director Malone, do you care to address, because I think those are obviously.
Very good questions as well, I think we've, we've sort of addressed the question regarding the materials as far as how we've sourced that and ensured that they're meeting all the necessary standards through that stringent EN 713 standard, if you look at, that's what's used for all the children's toys and materials to ensure safe product material. So materials, very safe for all of our kids. I think one of the other questions that I had was about.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Do you have children?
I do.
Do they play soccer?
Not soccer, but they do play on our turf fields.
So you let your children play on the turf fields?
Yes, sir.
And just, I'm just asking this personally, because I think that's where it always comes down to, is would you let your kids play on these turf fields?
100%.
And you would do that because you're not concerned that the field is going to affect their safety, short-term, midterm, or long-term?
Exactly.
And you feel supremely confident on that?
Yes, sir.
Do you have data to back that up?
Yes, sir.
Can you provide that data to the residents of Roswell?
Absolutely.
Because I think a lot of people have that concern. I think a lot of people really are concerned, like, am my kid's going to be harmed? Right? So I think we've got, we've got a responsibility to back that up.
It's been extensively researched since the implementation of artificial turf field. I think there is a, you know, Mr. Gus actually brought up another great question about pro athletes experiencing injuries on turf fields. He's not wrong. That is very much a concern through our professional athletes today. I would tell you that the reason they're experiencing those injuries is because they are significantly heavier as it relates to their weight and much more dynamic players when they're out there on that type of product.
Speed and velocity.
We, we are not, our youth, our 18 and younger age groups are not going to be playing at that level of intensity on those fields that would cause that level of injury. We have not seen any significant injury reports that state that youth are experiencing more injuries on artificial turf than they are on natural grass.
Maybe this is a question for Brian, how would you address, and a fair question, landfill, potential microplastics, et cetera, ending up in the water source?
Those are two different questions. Are you talking about the stuff going into the landfill or microplastics themselves?
I think both separate questions, yes.
The landfills, I actually don't know how much of this stuff would actually go to a landfill, but microplastics are more of an issue when we deal with treating water, and so these are, they're two separate things.
How would you address the question as, in terms of how Gus brought that up, his
I don't know how I would address that question with microplastics, that's a much more detailed, if we were talking about our water treatment plant and related to that, maybe, but in terms of, in terms of the landfill.
Can you address it with the water treatment plant, just to let everybody know?
Well, we, we test what we can. Microplastics are kind of an emerging technology, emerging problem right now. We have not, any of the elements that we are, that we are able to test for, we have not picked any of those up in, in our water treatment plan. Fulton County, I think, is the same way. Again, it's still emerging, and as they're learning more about microplastics and the impact on human health, EPA will start putting out more regulations on what we need to be testing for.
Thanks, Brian.
So that's separate of, from, from my standpoint, that's separate of the turf fields. In terms of the landfill, again, I don't know how much of these, I'd have to maybe even lean on Stephen to say how much of this, when they're, when they're being replaced, how much would actually go back into the landfill?
Fair question, I just think we need to be able to answer it, it may not change the outcome, but I think you always need to be able to answer the question, right, as fair, as well as you can. Director Malone, do you have any thoughts on that?
We just recently went through a kind of a renovation, so a couple points that I wanted to make that I didn't necessarily make the first time. So back to the replacement plan of this, just a reminder, when we go back in and replace the artificial turf fields, it is at a much lower cost than it is when we're first going in and installing the infrastructure that goes with that. But when we talk about the cyclical replacement plan, the replacement costs are significantly lower than what we talk about as we go into this. Now, as it relates to the replacement of the landfill, when we went through our replacement plan this year, we typically have looked for other opportunities where we could repurpose some of that material. If you've ever been over to the Hembry Park batting cages, we actually took several of that material and laid it down there as used to kind of put a subsurface over there at the batting cages at Hembry Park. Those are just the innovative ways that we continue to look for how we can utilize that material beyond just going to the landfill.
Thank you, Director Malone. Nancy, did you, I think that was three speakers, were there any other speakers?
We have one more speaker, Jennifer Philippi.
I think it's a council-elect. Jennifer Philippi, congratulations, welcome, Jennifer.
Yeah, Roman and Gus addressed a lot of my concerns, but I do have another question. When you're considering the cost of the fields, there's a cost also in disposal, and is that cost factored in to when you're addressing the pros and cons of the cost benefits? And also, I would just say, in terms of microplastics, they're going to be everywhere, they're going to be on the kids' skins, they're going to be breathing it in, it's, it's not something that you can alleviate when you're playing on plastic. So, yeah, I just want to understand the cost that we're going to incur 10 years from now when we go to dispose of it, if the company you're utilizing provides for that, what are those costs, and how does that play into the cost benefit analysis?
Thank you, Jeffrey. Thank you, Jennifer.
Another great question. As it relates to disposal costs, that is always a part of the contract stipulation. It is rarely identified as a cost to remove the material. Generally, we are getting priced out on all the new material, including the infill and the labor that goes into that. Generally, when we go through that process, it is an all-in cost associated with the total project that goes along with it. Rarely do we itemize out a disposal fee that is identified in that contract.
Thank you, Director Malone. All right. Nancy, any other speakers?
There are no more speakers.
Very much. Okay. Bring it to counsel for any thoughts. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. In our committee meeting, Councilwoman Beeson brought up a lot of the concerns the citizens have about exposure to rubber and things like that. So I've got the privilege to look through lots of health records and health things that work. One day when I was bored at work, I looked up a few research studies. The one that was most interesting is a soccer coach in the state of Washington noticed a lot of the soccer players were coming down with blood cancers specifically, and had raised concerns, like, is this coming from the rubber infield? So the Washington State Department of Health, in 2014, started a study. It was updated in 2017. It was updated recently in 2022. I think that was the latest study I could find on my research platform I have at the hospital. It studied over 2,300 soccer players, 237 goalkeepers. Goalkeepers are tend to be most exposed to the chemicals. There was no elevated cancer risk. And what was really interesting, there was no cluster of cancer risk. So you don't want to see, like, you know, if there's 237 goalkeepers, do 15 of them have cancer, right? And are they getting a specific type of cancer? In terms of exposure, and this, so that was from the US Department of, sorry, Washington State Department of Health. The US EPA has looked into exposure, and basically, they're exposed at thousands of times lower than any level considered unsafe by human agencies. That was updated in 2023 under the Biden administration's EPA. So, you know, I think the concerns are very valid, but as a healthcare professional who reads medical studies, I don't read as many as I used to, thank God. But I think the research has been out to show that, as far as we know today, this material is safe for our kids. And my kids play on it, and I have no problem playing on it. And as a parent, one of the things that I do is I try and make sure, and it's very hard with a four-year-old, but don't let them eat on the field. That is the key. So, there you go.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember, pro temp, Councilmember Hills?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This goes back to Mr. Pierzick's question about maintenance, and I just wanted to tell you, and Councilmember Worthland may have seen this too, as Recreation and Parks Liaison, but our staff that handles the fields has at least, one a year, correct me if I'm wrong, a full-day turf workshop to get up to date on best practices in the moment, and this is turf and lawn, but specifically, I believe, for turf, because there is an emerging, you know, changes in the environment and in the industry. So I've been to two of those, not the full day, but these guys, and a couple of women, but mostly guys, are all in. They take it very seriously. They are eager to learn new practices, new procedures. And anyway, it's not like we're just, oh, yeah, go out there and take care of the turf and not consider the source, whoever put it in, or who is the distributor for it. But I just thought that was worth sharing for you, Roman. And anyone else interested?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Hills. Will, any additional thoughts?
Oh.
Okay, thanks.
Here we go.
Do I have, sir? Yes, sir?
Yes, sir, real quick. Being very familiar with these fields, with the amount of participation that my children have on these fields through the soccer programs and everything else that they're going on, just as recently as yesterday, we were on the fields for two hours. So this goes to your question of, do you feel comfortable putting your own kids? I was on the fields myself, just as well as any other athletic soccer parent, lacrosse parent, rugby, football, you name it, parent, is there with them. This field, the bulk of this money is not being spent on the turf itself. The bulk of this money is being spent on the conversion of this field. This field has a bedrock or granite foundation underneath that makes this field, this field's based incredibly difficult to drain. That's why it pools the way it does. When it pools, it becomes a sponge, and that just simply takes time. You're taking kids offline, you're taking programming away for an extended period of time. One story I'd like for you to touch on real quick, and this goes back to about three years ago, when the Woodstock Soccer Fields turf, the semi-annual turf changeout took place in February, and I cannot remember the year, but we had a late freeze that year, and that late freeze basically prevented that turf from taking root and being a solid surface to grow during the spring months. We had to go back in, replace that turf, and because it was so far delayed in the process, can you share with everybody the end result by the end of that spring soccer season?
So by the end of that spring soccer season, it looked like we were playing on dirt. There was not really a blade of grass in certain, the majority of certain areas of that play surface. It was all we had at the moment, and anytime there's not that grass, a blade of grass there, the minute we get a little bit of rain, it just pools and muds, and it's impossible to play in. When we went in there, if I remember that summer, I think we had to literally replace, I think it was 75 to 80% of the natural grass on the surface of that field in order to get it playable during the summer after the spring season. And that was just because of that late February frost and freeze that really just killed off before we started playing around the same time.
Which equals another fee to the city to go back in and repallet the whole thing and all the intangibles that go with it. But this goes back to our favorite Fulton County manager's favorite saying, the known unknowns. And this is what we're doing by tackling this, is we know we have an unknown with all the tight problems keeping the grass fields up to a fantastic level for all of the kids to play on day after day. And that's really where the end result is, when you have to take a field offline and a kid misses a practice, a kid misses a game, that's really what we're going after here, is to keep these fields open as long and as late as possible.
Thank you, Councilmember Worthland. Appreciate that very much. Any other thoughts, comments, or questions from counsel? If not, I'll ask for a motion on item number four. Motion made to approve item number four, would you please, sir? You'll have to read the whole thing. Nancy's right, it's just a motion to approve item number four.
Motion to approve number four.
Thank you, sir. Number four has been, thank you, seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All aware of item number four and the full details and the debate over it, all in favor of approving item number four as stated by Nancy Long earlier, please do so by raising your hands. Let the record show that the vote is unanimous, and three to nothing, and it passes. Thank you very much. Nancy, would City Clerk Nancy Long, would you please read item number five?
Yes, this is approval of a resolution to adopt TAD policies and procedures and establish a TAD advisory committee for TAD number one, Roswell East-West Connection TAD. This will be presented by Economic Development Director Darrell Connolly.
Thank you, Nancy, so much. Welcome, Darrell.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm here with Senior Vice President Jeff Leatherman. Tonight, we're going to talk about tax allocation district policies and procedures for the East-West Connection TAD, otherwise known as TAD number one. By way of background, a TAD or Tax Allocation District is a tool for economic development, one of several tools that we've put in place as part of our economic development strategy. A TAD is essentially designed to capture the increase in taxes in a defined area. That increase can be used for redevelopment, for infrastructure and private investment. We've established a TAD number one along the east-west corridor, along Holcombe Bridge Road, and that's because of its aging buildings, shopping centers. The buildings along that area are about 40 years old, and so we're looking for, to revitalize that particular area. This particular slide shows you the basic model for a tax allocation district. As you'll see, you have the current tax revenue that will continue to flow into the general fund. Any incremental taxes or tax value goes into a special fund which the city can bond against through issuance of revenue bonds, and those can be used to pay for improvements. The TAD that we established last year expires in 25 years. All the revenue after the 25 years would flow into the general fund. So the incremental taxes go into the special fund until that time. Back in the end of 2024, the mayor and council was designated as the redevelopment agency. That means that you have the authority to issue bonds and determine how those funds can be used, the tax agreement can be used. In 2024, we also said that we would come back to you with tax allocation district policy and procedures, and that's what we're here for today. In your packages, there is pretty detailed policy and procedures. It talks about how funds can be used. Funds can generally be used for construction costs, professional services, real property assembly costs, anything that is associated with the Redevelopment Powers Act and is compliant with that act is eligible. In the policy and procedures, we are proposing setting up a tax allocation district advisory committee. That would be comprised of five seats. Three of the seats would be appointed by mayor and council. One would be a sitting council member. One person would be from the Roswell Development Authority. A third person would be from the Downtown Development Authority. Then there are two seats that would be appointed by Fulton County and then Fulton County Schools. And this particular committee would provide input on planning, development of projects within the tax allocation district. I would also recommend projects that would ultimately come to the mayor and council for decision on how to spend those funds. This slide is showing you an application process. Essentially, it's a rigorous process. It would go through our city economic development review, make sure that it's in alignment with the economic development strategy. It would go through a formal application, go to the TAD advisory committee, and ultimately go to the mayor and council as the redevelopment agencies, have that ultimate decision. The evaluation guidelines, the guidelines talk about being consistent with the law and policy, so it has to be consistent with the Redevelopment Powers Act, the city objectives, and the tax allocation district plan, which we adopted last year. We will be looking at the fiscal impact, the financial need. The financial need essentially, does the project require the TAD funding? But for that funding, would the project be feasible? And then we're also going to be looking at the public benefit and the return on that particular investment. The TAD policies also talk about a minimum size, so the minimum project would be a million dollars is what we were proposing. It has to be located within the tax allocation district. The property has to be under control of that particular entity that's making the application. Is there a financial necessity and is it compliant with the economic development strategy and comprehensive growth plan? We would also be looking at a weighting of different criteria. What are the developers' qualifications? Is the project ready and feasible? And what is the project impact? What we are proposing tonight is that you approve a resolution to adopt the tax allocation district policies and procedures and establish a TAD advisory committee, tax allocation district number one. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Darrell, so much for that presentation. Nancy, do we have any Roswell residents who would like to address this item?
Yes, we have two speakers. The first is Claire Snedeker.
Welcome, Claire.
Claire Snedeker, 765 White Allway. I just wanted to say that it was good to know and hear the extensive discussion on this in the October 28th committee meeting that provided details for residents to understand the scope and utilization of TADS, which has a lot of complexities. So I fully appreciate that it moved to this rigor of procedure, and also noteworthy that TADS tie into the economic development goals that were desired by residents and businesses during the comprehensive plan process as well as other public forums. Thank you for pursuing this tool for our city.
Thank you, Claire. Thank you so much. Appreciate those comments. Thank you. Nancy?
Yes, Mary Robashaw.
Welcome, Mary.
So I just want, I just would like clarification, according to our ordinance, so the mayor is now being included to reach a quorum? Because we have three council members and the mayor.
The mayor can be included as a council member.
Okay, because at the last vote, I didn't see the mayor taking the vote. All I heard were unanimous. I saw the other three raising their hands. So I'm assuming he voted affirmative?
He doesn't have to vote. It's a majority of those present and voting.
Well, if you have the majority, that's three votes, which is not a quorum.
But he only votes in the case of a tie.
Correct. And according to our bylaws, a quorum means four council members. So I guess I'm not understanding how we can have a quorum of a vote of three council members when a quorum requires four.
So by our charter, it says the mayor counts towards a quorum.
Correct.
But he only votes in case of a tie. So if there's only three council members, there's not going to be a tie.
Okay.
So he doesn't get to vote. But he is present, so there is a quorum. Thank you, Mary. Do you have any questions in relation to the item at hand? Because I think he's addressed your question.
Okay.
Do you have any answers or other questions? Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
That's in our charter?
Yes. All right. Any other Roswell residents like to address the matter?
There are no other speakers.
Thank you, sir. No other? I think the city attorney addressed the question pretty straight up. Thank you. All right. Any council members like to address item number five? If not, is there a motion to be made? Would you like to address it, Councilmember Johnson?
Oh, make a motion?
Yeah, why not?
Motion to approve item number five.
Yes, sir. Would you go ahead and read it for me?
Read it? Oh, sorry. This is approval of a resolution to adopt TAD policies and procedures and establish a TAD advisory committee for TAD number one, Roswell East-West Connection TAD.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Johnson. Seconded by Councilmember Worthland. Everybody understands the matter at hand. All those in favor of passing the motion as stated by Councilmember Johnson, please do so by raising your hands. Let the record show that the vote is three to zero and unanimous, and the motion passes. Thank you very much. City Clerk Nancy Long, would you read the number, item number six, please, ma'am?
Yes, this is the second reading of a text amendment to Chapter 10, Licenses, Taxes and Business Regulations, Section 10.3.4 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Roswell. This will be presented by Community Development Director Michelle Alexander.
Welcome, Michelle. Sorry, David, would you please, city attorney David, would you please read the ordinance? Sorry, Michelle.
Thank you. This is an ordinance to amend Chapter 10, Licenses, Taxes and Business Regulations, Article 3, Occupation Taxes, Article 10.3.4, Occupation Tax Leaved, Limitations and for Other Purposes. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the City of Roswell pursuant to their authority hereby adopt the following amendment. Chapter 10, Licenses, Taxes and Business Regulations, Article 3, Occupation Taxes, Section 10.3.4, Occupation Tax Leaved, Limitations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Roswell, Georgia, is hereby amended by deleting said section and replacing said section with a new Section 10.3.4, Occupation Tax Leaved, Limitations, which shall read as shown in Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. And if approved, this is the second reading.
Thank you, David, very much. Welcome, Michelle. I think it's your turn.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This text amendment transforms our current multifamily complex inspections program, and that is, it turns into a rotation as a requirement of all 43 of our multifamily complexes. Those properties must have an inspection completed annually. So that is the main aspect of this regulation before you, is to have an annual inspection. It further is a cost recovery program, and it puts a $36 per unit fee is associated with this program. So we highly recommend approval of this, of this text amendment and ordinance.
So we highly recommend approval of this, of this text amendment and ordinance.
Thank you, Michelle. Thanks for all your work on this. City Clerk Nancy Long, do we have any Roswell residents who would like to speak on this item?
There are no speakers.
Thank you very much. Council, do you have any, would you like to address this item in any shape, manner, or form? Councilmember Lee Hills?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a huge step in improving our quality of life and circumstance for a lot of our apartment complexes specifically. So being able to get in there and look, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Alexander, rather than every three years, it's more like every year, to take a look, make sure that we can see what's going on, that it's appropriate, appropriate circumstances and surroundings and the environment. And I'm very excited to have this move forward, especially following the discoveries that were made at the hotel earlier this year. I know we're talking about multifamily and not hotels in this, but we've got that underway as well. So thank you very much for your work on this.
Thank you, Lee. Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Moreland, any additional thoughts? Okay. All right. Anybody like to make a motion on item number six? And please read it for me, since we're here at the...
Yes.
Councilmember Lee Hills?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve the text amendment to Chapter 10, Licenses, Taxes and Business Regulations, Sections, Section 10.3.4 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Roswell. This is the second reading.
Thanks so much. Thank you for the motion, Lee. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor of the motion as stated by Councilmember Hills and seconded by Councilmember Johnson, please do so by raising your hands. Let the record show that the vote is three to zero and unanimous, and the motion passes. Thank you very much. All right. I think we don't need a city attorney's report tonight, do we? No? So being that there are no other items, this mayor and council meeting of Monday, November 11th, 2025, is adjourned. Thank you so much.